Good. Adequate notice of this special virtual meeting and executive meeting setting forth time, date, and location has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act on June 8, 2020 by prominently posting a copy on the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, TheWayne Today, Tap into Wayne.net, the municipal clerk, and on the district website. Okay, we're going to start off. I need a mover to approve this special meeting.
I'll move.
Mrs. Shear, second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Kumar. Roll call, Mr. Moffett?
Roll call on holding the...
On holding the new agenda item we discussed?
Yes. Mrs. Albanese?
I'm sorry, this is to approve this emergency meeting, is this one clear?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I'll actually read that. It says, "Resolve that the Board of Ed approve an emergency special virtual meeting for June 8, 2020 pursuant NJSA 10:4-9 (B) as such meeting is required in order to deal with the matters of such urgency and importance that a delay for the purpose of providing adequate notice would be likely to result in substantial harm to the public interest, and the Board could not reasonably have foreseen the need for such a meeting at a time when adequate notice would have been provided." So I had a motion by Mrs. Shear, seconded by Mrs. Kumar, and I can call roll.
Yes, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Did Mr. Duffy arrive? I didn't see him.
Not yet.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Do I see Mrs. Putup? No, not at this time. Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
That's seven affirmative votes.
Okay, now you can do your roll call. Thank you very much.
Get a call roll for the meeting. Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mrs. Shear?
Here.
At this time, we'll do a flag salute in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Oh, let me see if we have any... Oh, well, we have a lot of attendees. See, 35 attendees, okay. This portion of the meeting is open to citizen for comments on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover?
Mover.
Second. Giordano. Mrs. Shear. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on any matter, this will be our only public portion for this evening, please raise your hand. Up. Okay. Dr. Bouchard, I see two hands raised. Can you allow the first participant into the meeting? Dr. Bouchard, can you hear me? Okay. State your name and address, and you have the floor. Mrs. Lilis?
I'm Lilis, 711 Road, Wayne, New Jersey. I'm just wondering if this meeting is about graduation? If it is, shouldn't it be public, not private?
We'll answer your question momentarily. Did you have anything else you'd like to say? We have to get through the full public portion. I think you froze. We'll answer your question momentarily. Mr. Bouchard, we have another hand raised. If you could let that person into the meeting.
Marcus now has the ability to speak.
Hello. I'm sure that this will come up later in the meeting, so I will try to keep it as short as possible. This is on the matter of the diversity of resources and voices in the Wayne classroom. Again, I'm sure this will be talked about, but if you have not seen some of my online outreach, I just want to put in some of the numbers that I found collecting my own research and my own data with the curriculum that you guys have posted online. And I went through that data to look for the amount of books written by people of color and Black people in the curriculum, and the numbers are pretty staggering. Again, I will try to keep this short. In the English classes, from freshman year to senior year, from what I've found, you may get a total of 136 authors of both required and optional supplementary reading. From what I've found, of those 136 authors, 15 of them, only 15 of them, may be people of color. Even less of them will be Black people, and almost all of those people are optional supplementary readings, none of that is required. At the worst, at the worst of it, your junior year, from what I've found, you may read at best 51 authors, and of those 51 authors, three of them may be people of color, one of them may be Black. That is less than 2% of the authors that our students have access to are Black people, less than 2% that year, compared to 23% of Americans being people of color, 57% of people in New York being people of color. I'm sure that you guys have talked about this a lot, which I am excited to hear about your plan moving forward, but I just wanted to state that so you guys are aware that we, the people and former students, are doing the research and are trying to keep you guys accountable. The statements made by Mr. Toback this week were not helpful, in our opinion. They were blanketed, and there was no plans of action, so I look forward to hearing your plans of action on this topic. The plans of action will hopefully be very clear, and they will also include transparency and mainly accountability. And if those plans don't include accountability, I can assure you that your former students will hold you accountable, so I'm very excited to hear what you guys have to say, and I'm excited to make this even better, make Wayne schools even better. That's all. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Shak now. I see one more hand raised. Dr. Bouchard?
Hello.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. The name is Leitha Cal. I still maintain residence at 19 Robin Hood Way, though I'm currently in New Haven. So I wanted to join Marcus in talking about the recent events surrounding the public school curriculum and Superintendent Dr. Toback's response. But before I begin, I want to provide a little bit of personal background. So I actually graduated Wayne Hills High School in 2010, actually with your son, Mrs. Albanese, Steven. I was one of two valedictorians that year, took all of the AP courses on offer, graduated with awards in several departments, was on student council, head of several clubs, et cetera. In short, I was a golden child of the Wayne public school system. And since leaving Wayne, I was among the inaugural class at a global institution, spent several years in the Middle East working on education policy with UNICEF, UNHCR, Norwegian, British governments, working on access to and quality of education for refugees, even consulted with the Minister of Education of Oman and Rwanda on technology and 21st century skills. And quite frankly, a few weeks ago, I finished my JD at Yale Law School with an international human rights fellowship before me. I tell you all this not to brag or bolster or for any type of virtual applause, but to let you know that when I look back at my time in Wayne, I think to the incredible, absolutely incredible educators who were and still are very much a part of my journey, I think to Assistant Principal Chris Venti, who in AP English introduced me to the beauty of Black trauma turned prose, and Ralph Ellison and Toni Morrison and Gwendolyn Brooks. I think to the late June Karpewich, who in fourth grade taught us that the land we stood on was ethnically cleansed of the Laniwanape tribe, and that pachinac meant a land ready for cultivation and growth. I think to Director of Elementary Education, Don Auerbach, who as a math teacher uplifted me and made me believe in the power of my words and my thoughts. And I think to Ms. Carla McLean, one of the only Black teachers to ever be on your payroll, who taught me to be a leader and to see color, to see race all around me. So imagine my disappointment when in your letter, Superintendent Dr. Toback, dated June 5th, in responding to current and former students who express concern about their education, about the history they learn and the history they do not learn, about the books they read and the ones they don't, about the voices and lives that are included in your curricula and the ones that you deliberately exclude, that rather than engage with their concerns and demand better of yourself and this Board, you equivocated and you retreated. I know that my education was exceptional and not representative of most students in your public school system, but in response to student concerns, instead of striving to do better, to be better, you stated in so many words that the school district is meeting the minimum standards set by the state of New Jersey and the Amistad Commission, and that that was enough. To you, that was enough. And if you are satisfied with that, Dr. Toback, with doing the bare minimum, with letting down and ignoring your students, I implore you to reconsider your job, to reconsider the values you hold, and to reconsider whom you report to serve and whom you would like to uplift. Thank you.
I see another hand. I'm sorry, thank you. Is that all, Mr. Cal? Dr. Bouchard? We have another hand raised.
We have one more.
Susan? Yes.
Susan, you can now speak. Yeah, she needs to unmute herself.
You need to...
There you go. All right. I just realized. I'm a parent of a fifth grader, and I would like to express my concerns about...
I'm sorry, just one second, ma'am. I need your name, full name and address before you speak for the record. Thank you so much.
Michelle in court. So as a parent of a fifth grader, my great concern is with distant learning and how if in unfortunate circumstances we have to go in September, are there any plans for improvement? Because as of now, I feel that our kids are not getting, you know, one-on-one or even like face-to-face interactions that they're receiving while in a class. And, you know, for younger kids, it's, I mean, while they do complete the assignments, I don't think the interactive component is missing, and I would like to know if there are any plans concerning that. And secondly, I'm very happy to see that the seniors are getting the graduation, the one they work for, for so many years, but it doesn't seem to be any, you know, face-to-face or any activity other than, you know, again, virtual for the younger kids, for the eighth graders or fifth graders. Are there any plans for something that is not virtual?
Okay. Do you have any other questions, madam? We have one more hand raised, and we'll answer the questions at the end. Thank you. I see another hand. Dr. Bouchard? Yes, you may begin. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Gavin Wintink. I live at Seven Seminole, and I have three school-aged children, one in high school, one in middle school, and one in grammar school. And with this distant loo... with this distant learning, I think that all three of them have struggled greatly. In the beginning, it was kind of easy going on, and it's just, I mean, just gone totally downhill from there, especially with the one in grammar school. We've reached out numerous times for what we're supposed to do to get them back into the swing of things, and we've been told even just to bribe them further. And it's just been extraordinarily difficult, the whole... It's just, we moved to this town a few years ago from Belleville to searching for a better education system, and that whole thing, if this is the way, we just want to know where things are planning on going moving forward, and I'm assuming that's what this whole thing is all about, along with other current events. So that's just, wanted to make sure that was touched on. That's all.
Okay. Thank you for your thoughts and question. At this point, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Geppert. Would you kindly address the question about the purpose of the meeting and give a brief overview on that and answer that question?
Absolutely. The question was whether the meeting had to do with graduation and whether it should be in public or closed session. And yes, the topic for tonight is a legal topic. The Board is looking to have a conversation with their attorney, which brings it under the attorney-client privilege, and we are properly going into closed session to deal with it at that matter, to have our discussion.
Thank you very much. Dr. Toback, do you care to address any of the other questions before we move to executive session?
I'd be happy to respond to some of the comments. So the letter that was sent to our parents was sent as a response to some information that is included on the change.org petition, which now has about 4,500 people. But I would like to highlight, there's two parts of the letter that certainly call for involvement of other individuals, and there is also a part acknowledging that certainly the district can and will do better. And for any of the people that are in the audience tonight that are looking to have a discussion, to talk about how the district has moved forward in many areas, and like I said, we do have a way to go, but there are some things that the district has done that perhaps former students may not be fully aware of. So there has been some progress. And the purpose of my letter was to recognize and acknowledge the concerns of the change.org petition writers while also making them aware that there is more that is happening in the district. And so, but we are more than happy, we are already setting up a meeting with one of the organizers, and we're happy if there is others that would like to join or if you'd like to participate in a separate meeting. We would like to show you basically some of the things that are happening, and we'd be more than happy to do that. With regard to how we would move forward, there's a lot of different ways that we could move forward on this issue. It is an important issue, and to the extent that on an annual basis, the district establishes four to five district goals.
Right now, we're going to go into the other...
And the district goals that we establish are among the most important things that we are doing in the district. And so it seems to me that the situation that we're describing here rises to that level. We can establish this as a district goal, which would be something that we would start in the summer and work our way through the year. And we'd certainly involve a number of groups, and we would certainly be more than happy to hear other opinions. And like I said, we do understand that there are concerns about the curriculum. We are more than happy to entertain any discussion with groups or with individuals to share a little bit about where we are, because there is more to consider. And so, like I said, we'd be happy to do that. With regard to the online instruction, so my mind for us is, this is a tough start, and how it all started was very difficult for everyone. We do certainly appreciate the patience all our parents have exhibited throughout this. I know it has not been easy on anyone. I know this is very difficult and has been difficult, and this has been wearing on for a long time. We are, at this point, looking at, we're working right now on a reopening plan, but any reopening plan also has to have a contingency if in the event next year, things do not go well with the spread of the COVID-19 virus, we have to also be prepared to go into a distance learning model again. And so we're going to come up with a new plan, and we do want to have a lot more in the way, you know, some of the issues that parents have described. We hear the parent feedback, and we also acknowledge that we can do better as far as the distance learning model goes, that there is more ways to get students engaged. But again, we had a very rough start, and the way we started, under normal conditions, we'd look at different models, we'd look at different software, we'd look at different computers, that's just the tip of the iceberg. We would have all sorts of professional development, and in this case, we didn't have the opportunity to do it. To the extent we just started our one-to-one at the middle school level, so that's a relatively new thing, the high schools, they've been, they've been using Google Classroom, and they've had a one-to-one for a few years now. The elementary school transitioned to Google Classroom, and in some of the technology problems we had, we acknowledged it was not, it was, it was a very difficult time for everybody. So we continue to look forward. On the other hand, we have had, we've also had some success stories. We do have, on our weekly newsletter, there's a lot of different things that we are able to maintain, a lot of different programs, a lot of different activities. And so we do like to push that out to the community so people can see all the different things that are still happening in the classroom. So while, like I said, not ideal, we acknowledge that, you know, we're certainly going to look back and look to do better in the future for everybody if we have to go to a distance learning model again. Hopefully, it doesn't happen.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. At this time, just to let the public understand, we will be, I'll be making, asking for a motion to convene into executive session, which means this meeting will end. We don't plan on taking action, we will not be coming back into public tonight. So this ends the public portion of the meeting once we make this vote that's coming up right now. Unless anyone else has anything to add before I do that, now would be the time for any Board comments. Mrs. Albanese?
I do have a concern about moving to exec. My understanding of legal nexus to any issue is legal concern to the Board, so I'm assuming that the discussion will be about the mayor's proposal for graduation. I do think that we have people in the audience tonight who would like to hear that discussion. So my concern is, is there actual legal issue concerning the Board that I'm not aware of? Because I think we have to be careful about going into exec to discuss something that isn't covered by confidentiality and privilege. So I'm concerned to perhaps hear more information before we go to exec or before we vote as to why this needs to go to exec at this point. Thank you.
Care to weigh in, Mr. Geppert?
Sure. Yeah, I can assure you, there are legal issues that need to be discussed. The appropriate place to discuss them is in closed session. I shouldn't be providing legal advice in open session with the public, and I think it's appropriate for us to go into closed session to discuss the issues that are in front of us at this point.
Mr. Giordano?
Just want to point out, somebody put their hand up in the attendees. I don't know what you want to do about that.
Well, technically, we didn't close it. So, Dr. Bouchard, my mistake, recognize Janice Paul to speak, and then we can close executives, public.
Hello. It's Janice Paul, 73, Michael Drive. Thank you, Ms. Albanese, for raising that question, because I think that's exactly why many of us are here tonight. I understand that certain legal issues need to be discussed in closed doors, behind closed doors, but can you at least outline for us what those legal issues are? Not to discuss them, but to tell us what the legal issues are, and then you go do what you need to do. But I think the public and the parents of the seniors have the right to know what those, just what the legal issues are that you will be discussing without any discussion of those issues. Thank you.
Mr. Geppert?
Yes. As I stated before, there are legal issues for the Board to consider. They do involve graduation, they do involve a lot of legal considerations that exist. It would be inappropriate for me to discuss them in public. The appropriate place is in closed session with the Board members, where we can have a complete discussion. Although we're not taking action tonight, there is the possibility the public would be advised in the future if we were to take any future actions in this regard.
Thank you. Can I get a move to close public? There's no other hands raised. Mrs. Kumar?
I'll second.
Mrs. Putup? Are there any other Board comments before we convene into exec session? Okay, seeing no one, can I get a mover to... And the public portion of the meeting?
I move.
Mr. Giordano? Miss Putup? Can a mover convene into... Do you need a roll call?
I can, if you'd like.
I'm sorry?
I can, if you would like.
I don't think we need a roll call to close the public meeting. At this point, we are going to end this meeting, and then we'll vote to reconvene. I'm sorry?
I thought that we needed to vote to go into exec. That was my understanding.
Don't we do that at the executive meeting? Mr. Geppert?
I would vote at this point, since it's an emergency meeting.
Okay, fine. We'll vote again. Can I get a mover to reconvene into executive session?
Well, if I can, I'll record Mrs.... Mr. Giordano moved, and seconded by Mrs. Putup, moving the action, and I can call roll.
Well, they were closing the public portion of the meeting. Reconvening into exec is another vote.
No, I had Mrs. Kumar and Mrs. Putup closing the public session, and Mr. Giordano and Mrs. Putup motioning to go closed.
Okay, fine. Roll call.
Roll.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Albanese?
No.
Mr. Bubba?
No. This needs to be done in public. I mean, I don't see how we're at risk at all legally here. I just don't, so no.
We won't know.
Mr. Giordano?
I abstain.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
I abstain.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
That's a yes?
Yeah.
Mrs. Shear?
I'm going to vote yes as a senior parent and as a Board mayor. I'm going to vote yes, because I think that the Board needs to be involved first, and then information should be brought out to the public. So definitely yes.
So that is four affirmatives, two abstentions, and two noes. Is that acceptable, Mr. Geppert, to go into close?
You're on mute.
Um, I just, um, Mr. Duffy can't get, he's been listening.
Yeah, he should.
He can't speak to, to vote.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you should have the majority of those who are present, so if, he should be given the opportunity to vote.
Abstentions don't count toward the, uh, correct.
So, would I, you want me to call Mr. Duffy?
Yes, uh, Mr. Moffett's calling you right. He's calling you right now, calling you right now, bye.
Yes, hi, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Moffett, hey. Okay, I have you on speaker, I, I just, we, we were calling a vote, and I wanted to reach out, I was asked to call you if you, uh, are going to vote for going into closed session.
Yes, I would like to go into closed.
So that I'll, I'll record you as a yes.
Yes, I don't know, uh, right now, I could not get into the Zoom meeting earlier, it tells me now that I'm waiting for the host to start the meeting. I hope that this is gonna work for me. If not, I will listen via phone conversation through any of the other board members or yourself, whatever.
Okay, uh, well, like I said, I'll record this vote, and, uh, hopefully, when we go to, into closed session, you, you're gonna be able to.
Yes, hopefully so, if not, then it'll be another piece of connection.
Will do, thank you, sir. I, I recorded Mr. Duffy, yes, so that's five affirmatives. That would mean we could go into closed session.
Motion carries, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Geppert?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll see everyone in the executive session.